Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the Harrisburg City Council Legislative Session, Tuesday, November 10, 2015. I'm calling this meeting to order at 6:01. Mr. Claiborne, please do the roll call.
Mr. Allen.
Present.
Mr. Baltimore.
Here.
Ms. Daniels.
Present.
Mr. Kaplinsky. Ms. Reed.
Here.
Ms. Wilson.
Here.
Ms. Williams.
Here. And please note that Mr. Kaplinsky is excused this evening. Moving on to indication. Ms. Reed.
Thank you. We'd like to take a moment of silence to remember tomorrow's Veterans Day for all of those that sacrificed and gave, put their lives on the line for our freedoms. We also like to take a moment to remember Mr. Kaplinsky. He's having a death in the family, so we want to also take time out to remember him. Thank you.
Thank you. Pledge allegiance, Mr. Allen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Thank you, Mr. Allen. Moving on to communications. We have none this evening. Moving on to courtesy of the floor, anyone to my right that would like to come to the mic at this time, please do so. Anyone in the middle? Anyone to my left? Oh, I'm sorry.
Good evening. I'm Daniel D. Graham, 217 North Second Street here in Harrisburg. First, I was, uh, I, uh, in the Sunday Patriot News, I was pleased to read that President Obama had rejected the Keystone XL Pipeline, which would have come across Pennsylvania, I presume, and probably some other states. That's good, good, good. Again, we don't, uh, again, we, we don't need those disruptions that building a pipeline across the state, Pennsylvania and other states, building a pipeline would have caused disruptions and maybe would have gone through some people's backyards, as another article had said. No, no. Again, we don't need those disruptions from, from a pipeline. There are other infrastructure items, railroads and waterways and roads that can be used to transport oil. So, so, again, I compliment President Obama for rejecting that Keystone XL Pipeline. Now, when they transport oil by railroad freight trains, uh, it's good, provided, of course, that the tracks and the railcars are in perfect condition, safe. I would suggest, as someone else had suggested in a newspaper article, that the railroads reduce the speed of those oil trains. When the, when the oil trains pass through populated areas, they should reduce the speed of the oil trains to 35 miles an hour as a safety precaution. But otherwise, so far, it's working. Again, I understand there are many oil trains passing through this area and other populated areas every week, and so far, the tracks and the trains have been safe, uh, no derailments, no accidents, praise God. And, uh, and I trust the railroads will keep on maintaining the tracks and the railcars in good, safe condition, and passenger trains also, uh, in, uh, in good, safe condition. Now, about passenger trains, I had wanted to ask Councilman Kaplinsky about the possibility of more passenger trains on the Amtrak Line from Harrisburg to Pittsburgh. Councilman Brad Kaplinsky had said to me two weeks ago after the last council meeting that the Amtrak and the federal government were planning to add another passenger train on the Amtrak Line from Harrisburg to Pittsburgh. That is good. I had wanted to ask Councilman Kaplinsky if, what the latest word is, how soon they'll add that train, what the schedules are. Does anyone else have an answer to that question? They hear anything?
You can get with Mr. Kaplinsky when he gets back, sir. He had a personal emergency.
Uh-huh. All right.
Okay.
No one else has an answer?
No.
Okay. Well, that is good. I hope we do get another Amtrak passenger train from New York, Philadelphia, Lancaster, Harrisburg, and continuing on to Pittsburgh and serving intermediate points also, like Altoona and Johnstown, Lewistown. That would be great. And schedule, having the train scheduled so that, uh, so that a train passenger could make the round trip, uh, on the train from Harrisburg to Pittsburgh and Pittsburgh back to Harrisburg in one day, and does not have to spend the money to stay overnight in a hotel in Pittsburgh if, if, if one just wants a one-day visit there and a one-day round trip on the train. That would be great. Okay. Thanks, thank you for attention. God bless.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else to my left? Moving on. Approve of minutes, approve of the, oh. I'm sorry, sir. Had I already called to the right? You didn't, you didn't hear me. Come on. I didn't, you didn't hear me.
I'm going to clarify that.
Pardon me?
I would like to clarify that because this evening I have something.
Well, you had just came in, Mr. Boyd, and he obviously didn't hear.
I'm sorry. I didn't hear you.
Okay. Mr. Boyd, would you have a seat and let the gentleman talk, please? Thank you.
I want to talk. I don't understand about the Broad Street Market. I went in the bathroom the other day, and I almost fell. The water is so deep in the men's room. And Ms. Parker went in there to see it, the same water. It's, it's, it's real terrible, and then the next thing, they have pushed us, they said they don't want us in the market anymore, and I don't know why. And the other day, we were sitting there eating, about six or seven of us, and the guy coming in, and he went to measuring and putting down all of these things and looking up in the ceiling, and then, and I said, "What are y'all doing?" They said, "We getting ready to build in here." I mean, put a stand down the middle. If they put a stand down the middle, how is handicapped people like me going to get down and see through there? That's a fire code. That's, that's the fire exit through there. We can't get through there. And the lady told us, and one lady told us, say, "If we don't like it, we can get out of it, we can go out the door." That's not right. You know, because they really, all these empty stands in there, why they trying to build some down through the middle of the market when we can't get in and out down through there? We need to move. If they put the stand where they wanted to put it in the middle of the floor, if somebody is standing on this side or the other side, what it bend is, is you can't get, crippled guys like me can't get down there. People with, with, well, the chairs, electric chairs or wheelchairs, we can't get on, on down through there. I don't understand that, when they got all this empty space in here, inside of the market. I mean, why do they want to run us out of the market? We ain't got nowhere to sit in there now, when we go in there, sit and eat, or walk in there. You can't get down through the market now. And so, I don't know what's going to happen with us now. You know, we go in there and we commune and eat, about 10 of us, and we spend the day, and then we spend a lot of money in the market, but if they gonna, they gonna block up the fire, I mean, the fire lane, how we gonna get in and out of the door? You know, you can't see down there now. The other end of the market, they got a stand, and you got to squeeze through there. When people come in at lunch or something, you got to go to men's room, so I don't understand it.
Okay, sir. I'll check into it. I'll check with Ms. Parker to find out what's going on for you. Mr. Boyd.
Good evening. My name is Mr. Boyd. I'm here this evening speaking to the seven members of the city council and the Honorable Mayor of the City of Harrisburg to inform all parties. As far as the Broad Street Market is concerned, I have been one of the ones that stood by myself more than once. I would like to know why that we have two mayors of this great city that's posted at the Broad Street Market. Mayor Reed, Chief Keller is also the chief of police. I have asked twice already that they remove a sign from the Broad Street Market that states this, "The Midtown Market Corporation." Before that sign was there, the Broad Street Market was there. On, two weeks ago, prior to me asking about that numerous times, the second Thursday, I went once again and remind them, "Why is that sign over by a nonprofit? Is there a mental disease here? The Broad Street Market sits here. The nonprofit sits over here." I'm still stating that the residents of this city and the old families established of this city and mine, I'm from here, we take an affront that a nonprofit, I can speak to them, and I can also be assaulted by a nonprofit. Two, two weeks ago, I spoke to one individual in earnest. We almost had an agreement to have that sign moved from the nonprofit and remove it to the Broad Street Market, which is 150 years old, where slaves were sold, where some of my people stood there and shopped and some of yours. So, we had an agreement. While I'm speaking, a nonprofit came to me and pushed me and assaulted me, and I'm still saying, I come from the street. Everything but Jesus Christ stopped me from doing something to that individual. But I'm saying one thing about justice here in this city. When will we have justice? Because there is no way that this would happen in another city, that an individual and a resident could be assaulted because he stood up for the right thing. I stood there, but I was not defiant. I didn't even see the man coming, and he is a nonprofit. So, once again, I still say to this great city, the nonprofits need to go or they need to be held accountable. This administration has said that they would hold the nonprofits accountable. I'm still waiting, but I'd like to remind once again the seven and the Honorable Mayor of this city, excuse me, if this individual would have assaulted you, what would you have done? Thank you very much.
Okay, Mr. Boyd. Anyone else, please?
Good evening.
Good evening.
Can everybody hear me?
Certainly can.
Can you hear me now? I'll just need one minute.
You done it for yourself?
Or less. My name is Kevin Washington. I'm a resident of Harrisburg City, 2331 Swaterra Street, Bellevue. Been a citizen all my life, graduate of Harrisburg High, college graduate, and a nonprofit owner. I came here to do two things, and I'm glad that Mayor Papenfus is here. You don't know me. You walked past me, you seen me before, you shook my hand prior to coming into office. But I'm here specifically for city council, but more specifically, Mr. Jeff Baltimore, the Honorable Jeff Baltimore, and the Honorable Mayor. Our nonprofit organization is called Launching Out, Reaching Deep. It's been in operation since 2002. We started in Joliet, Illinois. I'm the president, CEO. We have six components. We have an educational component, we give scholarships, and we've been doing that for the past 16 years. We just had a 16th Community Recognition Dinner, and I got a proclamation from your office and one of your constituents, Mr. Singleton. I appreciate his diligence in seeking me out to make certain that it could be, it could have been presented at the time when we recognize Dr. Nathaniel Gaston and his wife, and also the Honorable Jeff Baltimore, who did due diligence the same and saw to it that we had a proclamation. I'm one of the best-kept secrets in Pennsylvania, in Harrisburg. And the reason why I say that is we are self, we are a self-sustaining nonprofit organization. I've never asked anyone in the city or from the county for money, because all of our money that we get comes from outside of Harrisburg. Some of you here might have received my email, lordcdo@gmail.com. You might have got emails. Look into it, because there's a lot of people that need help. The Salvation Army provides it, the Help Center provides it, but L O R D provides it. So, I wanted to put a face with an email. I send the email to every one of the city council persons. And that's to say this, that I don't need a one response, because he represents city council. So, whether any other, other city council members would have responded, that's not a problem. He responded, and he represents city council. I teach my children this. Win with integrity and lose with humility, and don't allow your personal feelings to prevent your professional goals and aspirations. Don't let that hinder that. And I'm grateful to say, and I'm going to do it in this order, to the Honorable Mayor Papenfus, if I can give you this, I'm glad you're here, I wanted to give this to you. In honor of our organization, L O R D, this is a letter that I wrote to you. So, I wanted to officially look you in the eye. I'm Kevin Washington, and your representative, Carl Singleton knows me. This is for you. And for the Honorable Jeff Baltimore, this is also to you. I appreciate your, your diligence, all, all of what you do for city council, and even for the community, because you are a community person. Thank you. You, you represent this group of your peers very well, and this city. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else, please? If not, thank you. We're moving on. I would like to announce that the city council had an executive session today at 5:00, and it was to discuss a personnel matter. Moving on to approval of minutes. Approval of the legislative session minutes of October 27, 2015. Are there any omissions, deletions, corrections? Hearing none, minutes will stand as approved. Moving on to reports of committees. Report from Chair Williams on the Administration Committee meeting of October 28, 2015. The Administration Committee met on October 28, 2015. In attendance were myself and Councilman Allen. Topics of discussion was one resolution and one bill. Resolution 71 of 2015 was a resolution appointing Mr. Glenn Dunbar to serve on the Building and Housing Code Board of Appeals of the City of Harrisburg. After interviewing Mr. Dunbar, Mr. Dunbar brings a wealth of experience, knowledge, and valuable management skills obtained through his various positions employed by the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania, and he would be definitely an asset to the Building and Housing Code Board of Appeals. I would recommend full approval by council for Mr. Dunbar to the Building and Housing Code Board of Appeals. Moving on to Bill 11, 2015. In attendance for the D I D was Tom Scott, the board president, and Todd Vanderwood, the executive director. And D I D is Downtown Improvement District. And Bill 11 was an ordinance for the purposes of reauthorizing within the City of Harrisburg an area designated as a Neighborhood Improvement District, designating a nonprofit corporation to administer the same, accepting a business plan for the district, authorizing the continued assessments for the operation thereof, and meeting all other requirements of the Neighborhood Improvement District Act, and repealing all inconsistent ordinance or parts of ordinance. The Harrisburg Downtown Improvement District has been in existence for 15 years and was reauthorized in 2010. The National, I'm sorry, the Neighborhood Improvement District Management Association is a nonprofit business corporation, and they would like the city to designate them as a governing body to oversee the management of the Neighborhood Improvement District. A board will be appointed and will consist of nine board members, which will include a member appointed by the City of Harrisburg. The Neighborhood Improvement District Management Association will submit an audit of all income and expenditures to the governing body of the city within 120 days after the end of each fiscal year. The Harrisburg Downtown Improvement District's mission is to enhance the image of downtown and quality of life through programs and campaigns that help increase property values through effective and efficient cleaning, safety, and beautification services. To date, the Downtown Improvement District has put 250 flower baskets throughout the downtown area, installed a message board, created a website and weekly newspaper, installed 12 bike racks, placed 53 new trash cans on the streets of Harrisburg, placed banners on light posts, and installed security cameras, tend to be in fact, and have documented 13 other potential future improvements. The Downtown Improvement District played a crucial and vital role in the revitalization of Harrisburg. The Downtown Improvement District has requested a five-year agreement with the City of Harrisburg, but the administration would only like to do a two-year agreement. Their reasoning was that to pressure the Downtown Improvement District into accomplishing in two years instead of five years, major improvements. Presently, there are 218 assessed properties in the Central Business District and 56 tax-exempt properties. As the chair, the Downtown Improvement District has already reorganized their board and on a daily basis have proven their commitment to the city of their continued agenda to make this city safer and cleaner, with all of the completed projects to date mentioned earlier in my report, and continuing services that are projected for the future. I recommend a five-year agreement, and would ask that this council vote in the affirmative for this bill for five years. And this will be on the agenda at the legislative session of December 15, 2015, for a vote. That is the end of my report. Moving on to report from Chair Baltimore. On the Public Safety Committee meeting of November 9, 2015, Mr. Baltimore, are you ready for your report?
Yes, I am. Thank you, Madam President.
You're welcome.
Public Safety Committee met yesterday, November 9, at 5:30. Those present, including myself, were Councilmember Ben Allen, Council President Wanda Williams, Councilmember Susan Brown Wilson, and from the administration, Mayor Papenfus, Chief Enderline, Jonathan Hicks, Neil Grover, and we discussed Resolution 88-2015, which was a resolution ratifying the submission of a grant to DEP, the Department of Environmental Protection, to renovate the roof at Station 2 on 16th Street. It is an environmentally friendly project that is designed to catch rainwater in a 5,000-gallon Cistern, which would otherwise, otherwise add to runoff. The captured rainwater will be used to wash floors, fill toilets, flush toilets, and fill street sweepers, and some fire trucks. Also, community gardens will benefit from the water if they come over and make a request to use, use the water. The project will also add more insulation. Total project cost to date is $516,000 and change. The grant application to DEP is for $200,000, and CRW will match dollar for dollar up to $200,000. The remainder will be made up of a combination of CDBG funds and another grant that, that will be applicable or can be applicable to the project. The project is designed to, by local talent, I think it's Reynolds Construction, and will be, be installed using local MBEs and WBEs. The project and the application has support of State Rep Patty Kim and Senator Rob Teplitz. I recommend that the council approve the project.
Thank you, Mr. Baltimore. Thank you. Moving on. We had ordinance for first reading, but I removed that from the agenda. What's Bill 13 of 2015? Ordinance for amendment, we have none this evening. An ordinance for final passage, we have none as well. Moving on to resolutions. Mr. Claiborne, please read Resolution 71 of 2015 into record.
Resolution 71 of 2015 was moved by Ms. Williams, seconded by Mr. Allen. It is a resolution approving, appointing Mr. Glenn Dunbar to serve on the Building and Housing Code Board of Appeals of the City of Harrisburg.
Any questions or comments on Resolution 71? Hearing none, please call the vote.
Mr. Allen.
Yes.
Mr. Baltimore.
Yes.
Ms. Daniels.
Yes.
Mr. Kaplinsky. Ms. Reed.
Yes.
Ms. Wilson.
Yes.
Ms. Williams.
Yes. Moving on to Resolution 88, 2015.
Resolution 88 of 2015 was moved by Mr. Baltimore, seconded by Ms. Williams. It is a resolution ratifying the submission of a grant application to the Commonwealth's Department of Environmental Protection for the purposes of renovating the roof of Fire Station 2.
Mr. Baltimore, anything else on Resolution 88?
No, ma'am.
Okay. Any questions or comments on Resolution 88? Please call the vote.
Mr. Allen.
Yes.
Mr. Baltimore.
Yes.
Ms. Daniels.
Yes.
Mr. Kaplinsky. Ms. Reed.
Yes.
Ms. Wilson.
Yes.
Ms. Williams.
Yes.
Resolution passed.
Thank you. Moving on to Resolution 94.
Resolution 94 is a, was moved by Mr. Allen, seconded by Ms. Daniels. It is a resolution approving a professional services contract with Pratzenberg and Associates, Incorporated, doing business as Keystone Collections Group, Keystone, to provide collection services for the City of Harrisburg's local services tax.
That would be placed in Budget and Finance Committee. Moving on to Resolution 95.
Resolution 95 of 2015 was moved by Mr. Allen, seconded by Ms. Daniels. It is a resolution approving an agreement between the City of Harrisburg and the School District of the City of Harrisburg for the collection of business privilege and mercantile tax and amusement tax for 2016.
And that would be placed in Budget and Finance as well. Moving on to Resolution 96.
Resolution 96 of 2015 was moved by Ms. Daniels, seconded by Mr. Baltimore. It is a resolution approving the preliminary land development and lot consolidation plan submitted by Doug Gamber of Roddenbush Engineering, Incorporated, on behalf of the Harrisburg Housing Authority, to construct two residential structures of four units totaling 5,727 gross square feet over parking at 1257 Thompson Street.
That would be placed in Building and Housing Committee. Moving on to Resolution 97.
Resolution 97 of 2015 was moved by Ms. Daniels, seconded by Mr. Baltimore. It is a resolution approving the preliminary land development and lot consolidation plan submitted by Doug Gamber of Roddenbush Engineering, Incorporated, on behalf of the Harrisburg Housing Authority, to construct a multifamily, multifamily residential structure of 26 units over parking totaling approximately 51,000 gross square feet, and an associated first-floor retail facility of approximately 2,565 square feet at 1249-1257 Mulberry Street and 1249-1255 Dairy Street.
That would be placed in Building and Housing Committee. Moving on to Resolution 98.
Resolution 98 of 2015 was moved by Ms. Daniels, seconded by Mr. Baltimore. It is a resolution approving the preliminary land development and lot consolidation plan submitted by Doug Gamber of Roddenbush Engineering, Incorporated, on behalf of the Harrisburg Housing Authority, to construct a multifamily residential structure of 20 units over parking totaling approximately 35,620 gross square feet at 12, 1201-1209 Mulberry Street and 209-211 Crescent Street.
That would be placed in Building and Housing Committee as well. Moving on to Resolution 99.
Resolution 99 of 2015 was moved by Mr. Allen, seconded by Ms. Daniels. It is a resolution approving the supplemental fifth proposed 2015 budget reallocation.
Mr. Allen, I think you have some comments to make about Resolution 99.
Yes, I do. And just a question, the revised exhibit, we'll call Exhibit B?
No, I would just substitute the exhibit. There's an exhibit to it. You're substituting the exhibit.
Okay, substituting it. Perfect. Just one. So, yes, we had, had for discussion Resolution 99. This was actually part of the fifth. So, yes, we had, had for discussion Resolution 99, this was actually part of the fifth budget reallocation. We had some conversation back and forth over this. This was regarding a buyback for management, and the mayor proposed a buyback of 75% for a budget reallocation of $21,614.96. Council's perspective on this is, comes out of a question of fairness. We realize that the management employees, in many cases, were unable to take the vacation. It's the recommendation of council that we allocate 100% for the buyback, which would be an amount of $28,819.95, which is a difference of roughly $7,000. We realize that the mayor has executive oversight to be able to allocate that. We're just recommending that it be the 100% out of fairness and due diligence for what the employees were going through, through not just one administration, but two, and kind of the extension of being able to take time off. So, we will be substituting the new exhibit, allocating the 100% for the buyback, and have that up for vote tonight.
Thank you, Mr. Allen. Any other questions, councilmembers, on Resolution 99? Hearing none, please call the vote.
The vote on the amendment?
Yes.
Mr. Allen?
Yes.
Mr. Baltimore?
Yes.
Ms. Daniels?
Yes.
Mr. Koplinsky?
Yes.
Ms. Reed?
Yes.
Ms. Wilson?
Yes.
Ms. Williams?
Yes.
Amendment passes.
Resolution 99 as amended.
For clarification, was there a motion and a second on the amendment?
Oh, sorry. I am so sorry.
Let's rewind.
Yes.
Rewind.
Rewind.
I have a motion for my amendment.
So moved. Second.
Okay. Motion has been properly moved and seconded. Is there any questions on the motions or comments? Hearing none, please call the vote.
The vote on the motion. Mr. Allen?
Yes.
Mr. Baltimore?
Yes.
Ms. Daniels?
Yes.
Mr. Koplinsky?
Yes.
Ms. Reed?
Yes.
Ms. Wilson?
Yes.
Ms. Williams?
Yes.
Now, call the vote as amended.
Okay, the vote as, Resolution 99 as amended.
Yes.
Mr. Allen?
Yes.
Mr. Baltimore?
Yes.
Ms. Daniels?
Yes.
Mr. Koplinsky?
Yes.
Ms. Reed?
Yes.
Ms. Wilson?
Yes.
Ms. Williams?
Yes.
Thank you. Moving on to old business. Councilmembers, is there any old business this evening? Moving on to new business. Councilmembers, is there any new business?
Yes.
And Mr. Baltimore?
This weekend will mark, well, there'll, there'll be some celebration of the 150th Grand Review, 150th anniversary of the Grand Review in Harrisburg. It's a, United States Colored Troops will be marching downtown. There were several events. There's something at the Civil War Museum Friday evening. There's something at Grace United Methodist, a dinner, a white carnation dinner, which will honor the descendants of those who fought, United States Colored Troops who fought in the Civil War. So, it'll be a, a grand celebration, not only for, for descendants of African-American soldiers who fought in the Civil War, but I think for Harrisburg, because I think this was the only state in the Union that did have a Grand Review. And I think it's a significant historical event, and I encourage people to come out. The parade is 10 o'clock, or we assemble at 10 o'clock. I'm not sure what time we start, I think maybe 10:30. Again, there's a dinner at Grace United Methodist. Reception starts at 6, dinner at 7. There's also a, a reception at the Civil War Museum at 5:30. I think the one at the Civil War Museum is an invitation only, you have to respond via email to Ruby Dobbin. I think that's Jeff Hace, Commissioner Hace's assistant. But there are a number of celebrations going on, and I encourage everybody to get out and be a part of it, or at least, at least witness. I think the parade will have colored troops from 16 states, and I think that's at least 10 in a unit. So, it, it should be interesting. And they're reenactors, so it'll be, I think it'll be very, very somber, historical moment for Harrisburg.
Thank you, Mr. Baltimore. And I certainly will be a part of that too as well. Is there any other new business?